All right, Happy New Year. Welcome, everybody, to the City of Cupertino's Planning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, January 11, 2022. As folks know, in accordance with the government code, this will be a teleconference meeting without a physical location to help stop the spread of COVID-19. If you're trying to communicate, email comments by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, as you know. You can email comments during the times for public comment, and the staff will be looking at that. You can do that to planningcommission@cupertino.org. The staff liaison will read the emails into the record. And of course, you can always use the teleconference and the Zoom meeting and raise your hand as we go along the way. So with that in mind, let's start with the roll call. Go ahead, Sarah.
Commissioner Capil?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mariapala?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sharp?
Present.
Chair Wong?
Present. Okay, with that, we'll go to our first item, which is the approval of the December 14 Planning Commission Minutes. If you got a moment, take a look at the draft minutes, and if there are any comments, please provide them. If not, please make a motion to approve the minutes.
Chair Wong, I think Sarah might have an amendment or correction to make to the draft minutes.
Oh, please, go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. So I did catch earlier today, and I do apologize that I didn't catch this previously, for vote, I'm sorry, for item number two for the city work program proposals. I do have in the votes Commissioner Capil as an I, when in fact he was absent, but I have that listed twice. So I do need to strike his name from the vote, and other than that, that's the only change that I need to make.
Okay, cool. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
With the amended changes.
Correct, with the changes.
I second it.
Okay, let's go, call to votes. Sarah, who's the owners?
Thank you. Commissioner Capil?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mariapala?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sharp?
Aye.
Chair Wong?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, wonderful. Noting that we have no old business, let's go to new business. Item number two, discuss potential city work program proposals for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Recommended action, recommend potential city work program proposals for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and identifying the top three proposals, limited to no more than five. Planning manager, Pugh Gosh, I guess you'll lead the discussion, and we'll send it over to you, so.
Were there any oral communications?
Oh, wait, my fault. I'm reading the wrong thing. I'm reading the minutes. Let's go to the oral communications, and let's go to minutes. Oral communications first, for anybody who wants to join in and speak on a topic that is not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Speakers are limited to three minutes. So in most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to matter not on the agenda. So if you get a moment, please raise your hands. If you've got something you'd like to add in oral communications. Okay, I don't think we have any yet, but if anybody wants to add anything, you're your last chance to raise your hand. Bottom right on Zoom, you can hit raise hand. If not, we'll move on to item number two. Okay, with that, let's go to new business. Subject 2021 General Plan Annual Review Implementation Plan. Recommended action, provide direction on the General Plan Annual Review Implementation Plan. And of course, we've got a staff report with that, along with the annual report first draft. Pugh, please take over.
Good evening, Plan Commission, Happy New Year. As the commission is aware that we do this on an annual basis in terms of going over the policies and strategies in the general plan and review the work that the city has done so far in implementation of the general plan policies and strategies. And this is required by state law. It has to be, a report has to be provided to the city council, the legislative body, by April 1 of every year. And so we start with the Planning Commission. We kind of, you know, gently treaded, tread the waters late last year for this particular year's update. And this is the first draft where you will see the edits that we've, you know, that we started to make to the, to the document. And for the commission to provide any feedback on that, on the comments that are in, I think it's column L, or the last column on the right, for the commission to go through and decide whether they want to make any edits to it or not before it's presented to the city council. In addition to this, of course, there is a housing element, not a housing element update, but a, a report that is generally on forums that are prepared by the HCD, and that report will be presented at a later date. But in the meantime, we start with this because this is a much larger document. So I'm happy to kind of present, like we've done in the past, share my screen, and the commission can make their comments as we go through, or however the commission wishes to do this.
Yeah, sounds good. I think we can do that, go page by page and start that process. And let's start with the first set, and if you can kind of.
Sure, I could bring that up here.
Bring that up, yes. I think starting with land use 11. We can also skip the things that are not action items, too, if that helps as well.
Correct, yeah, we made some minor edits to the policy LU2, basically, you know, informing everybody that no changes were made in 2020 or 2021 to the development allocation. I did want to point out that in strategy, on the second page of strategy LU 1.2.2, these numbers will still need to be amended to reflect the balances as of 20, the end of 2021. This is from last year. We're working on getting those numbers. We can kind of jump forward to where there were edits. We made some edits to policy LU 1.4, which talked about encouraging parcel assembly and discouraging partialization, particularly in field development occurs, except that we all know that SB9 was implemented in late last year by the state. And so we wanted to make the, acknowledge that the council has adopted an urgency ordinance to allow partialization within the neighborhoods as required by SB9, and also allow the development of duplexes in the single-family zoning areas, and that a regular ordinance will be presented for both the Planning Commission and the city council's consideration in 2022. Moving forward from that, I think the next change is really in policy LU 3.2, where it talks about how figure LU2 is where the minimum heights and setback ratios are specified in the community form diagram. And this link, updated language acknowledges that there were changes made in October 2021 to figure LU2, to clarify that language as part of the objective standards exercise that the city went through for the last couple of years. Let's see. The next edit is really in the historic preservation for heritage trees, this policy LU-6.7. Just a little note has been added that the heritage tree list may need to be updated. That was adopted by ordinance quite a number of years ago, I want to say in the 90s. However, there have been several trees that have been removed over the years due to disease or natural causes. And so that list does need to be amended to keep it current. Same thing.
Can I ask a question on that one?
Sure.
So usually, you know, I'm sure now you're fully aware that our residents in the community are pretty, you know, green-friendly and, you know, tree-sensitive, right? So, so whenever we mark a tree for removal or whatever, there's always, you know, uproar in the community, right? They, they think, you know, we are, you know, removing prematurely or, you know, without a proper cost or whatever, right? So, so is there something that we can do to help them better understand? I had to deal with some of that, you know, like on Nextdoor as a resident, you know, on some tree removal that we did on the memorial park right behind, you know, Koolen Center, right? Like, there are a lot of noise being made, and you know, a lot of people chimed in, and you know, I chimed in as well, like, you know, guys, you know, we don't do that just for the sake of removing trees, but you know, just look at it, but it all for a good reason, but I think, you know, is there something that we can do to communicate better?
You know, in terms of tree removals, there are, there are findings that staff has to make before a tree can be removed, except in R1 zoning districts where I think the code pretty much allows removal of a tree for any reason, really. Depending, there's a certain threshold above which you have to provide an arborist report and things like that. Below a certain threshold, you can just remove a tree as long as you're replanting it and replacing it. So there are two types of tree removals in essence. You know, if, if a tree is larger than a certain size, of course, we, there has to be justification for removal of it. So that, we communicate those reports, you know, when that comes in, we certainly do communicate those reports and make sure that, you know, that the arborist report is peer-reviewed, and so to justify the findings.
Yeah, so my question is not so much, now, are we justified in removing or not? I'm sure, no, we're doing all the right things, but I think, you know, we are falling short on, you know, communicating to the users. Like, for example, you know, we might be, you know, having all the information on our website, but people don't go to the website. They just see a sign on the tree that says, you know, this is marked for removal, but they don't know why it's marked for removal.
Correct, and the purpose of that notice is to invite, that comment is to encourage people to contact the planning department and the planners to get that information. We do provide that notice, and the code requires us to do adjacent noticing as well, to let people know that there are certain trees that are being removed, you, you have, you know, the information is available at City Hall. I'm not sure, you know, we mail those letters, individual letters to adjacent property owners as required by the code. And so I'm, you know, short of knocking on people's doors, you know, I don't think that there is much more that we can do to, you know, to encourage people to contact us. But the whole premise of the notice is to encourage people to contact the planning department and the planners working on it to make sure they can get all that information.
Right, so I'm not asking for no additional notice of knocking on the doors, right? I'm sure now we are sending those mailers, probably the people that are making noise, not necessarily the people that live there, it's people, you know, visiting or passing by and all that stuff, right? So, so if, if you can provide the information where people are seeing it, right? Then there is no need for them to go dig up and, you know, make noise and all that, right? So, so, so I'm, I'm just looking for, you know, something more than what we are doing today so that, you know, people, you know, know that it's being done for a reason.
I mean, it's a thing of, certainly, that will need more thought to be put into it, you know, on the, on this spot. Right now, I'm kind of trying to think about, you know, what can we do? But it's certainly something that we can think about more additionally. I mean, right now, we're doing everything that the code requires us to do. You know, can we go beyond the code? We'll have to think to see what we can accomplish short of, you know, over, you know, committing ourselves on resources as well.
Yeah, is there, within the notification, do you provide a pointer? If somebody seeks to understand the, the reasons behind it? Like, maybe a, a URL or something? Or where the reason for, in a short summary form is provided and without too much of a hassle of calling Planning Commission and going through two, three levels of indirection to figure out the reasons we'll lose the interest of the person who is trying to object to it, rather than go and seek the summary using, accessing a URL or something and just get the answer. I mean, most of the time, when you provide two, three levels of indirection, the, the interest is lost completely.
So the direction on the notice is to call the planner that is working on the project because they have all the information available, so it doesn't go through the Planning Commission? So the inquiries go directly to the planner working on the project?
I think, I mean, if you look at the tree ordinance and if you look at onsite, right, on tree protection, tree removal, there's some things that are pretty clear as to what's being done. If we go back into the CMC or something, in terms of the ordinances, if there's something we want to change, we should definitely make a suggestion or put that onto the agenda at that point in time. I would make that suggestion. You see something else that you want to do or change or add there. What number are we on right now? LU, let's see, 671, is that correct? Are we on, we're on LU 671?
I'm on 671, and I'm on the top of page eight, and I was just checking to see if my screen was still being shared.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's being shared. You're, you're there.
So the next one was related to cultural resources and about public artwork. There's a note that's been added that in 2021, the Fine Arts Commission approved the acceptance of Inlufis for public art for this public storage development because they requested that instead of actually placing public art on the property because they felt there weren't good spots for that where it would be visible. Let's see, the next update is. I did this one, actually, just this evening, I realized for strategy LU 8.3.4, it talked about considering locations for high-sell stocks producing retail uses, and we had a note about several attempts being made to identify a suitable location for Costco in Cupertino, and that one has not been identified. I literally just read an article about 30 minutes before this meeting that said that there's a new Costco that's going in at Westgate West. So I think we'll have to make some amendments to this particular one because I'm not sure that Costco will want to be, have another location fairly close to one that we're already proposing. The next amendments are in strategy LU 9.1.1. We have a new economic development manager, and, you know, the, the past text referenced the Economic Development Strategic Plan that was adopted in 2016. Well, it's been almost six years since it was adopted, and so my understanding is that in, in the upcoming fiscal year, which is 22, 23, a new economic development strategic plan will be developed, and, and local economy market analysis will begin to serve as the foundation for that strategy. Additionally, in the next one, there is some text added about the Small Business Saturdays, which is, was apparently a partnership between the city chamber and the library to bring attention to the benefits of small businesses in the community. See, there have been some changes in the next strategy LU 9.1.3, and I have to figure out what the change was, really, except that I know some text has been edited, but I see there's no bold text here, but I think basically saying that there's continuous dialogue with the business community to make sure that we can, you know, encourage new businesses and routine existing businesses so that we can strengthen our economic base. Moving along. The next updates are really in the policy 10.4, LU 10.4, regarding our urban service area. As the commission is aware, the city has been working to acquire property at the Lawrence Smithy, for the Lawrence Smithy Park at the eastern border of the city, near Enterin Canada. That property has been acquired, however, annexation has not been completed. Those proceedings are ongoing. It is my understanding that the city of San Jose will be acting on a resolution or something that Lafco needs in order for that annexation to move forward later this month.
Just to be clear.
I'm sorry, say that again, Chair Wong?
Anexing who for Lafco purposes?
Yes, so the city of Cupertino will be annexing property from the city of San Jose in order to accommodate the Lawrence Smithy Park.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, and my understanding is the city of San Jose will be acting upon that at their meeting later this month. And once that happens, then, you know, we can actually submit paperwork to Lafco to actually complete the formal, formalize the annexation proceedings. And so when that happens, you know, of course, the city will then move forward into a next stage for the Lawrence Smithy Park. But in general, what, what has happened in 2021, because this is a report for 2021, is that, you know, annexation proceedings have been ongoing. There's been a lot of back and forth in terms of how to annex, et cetera, et cetera, and then the negoti, not negotiations, but the collaboration with the city of San Jose. Let's see, the next update is in policy 12.1, LU 12.1, regarding establishing, maintaining building and development standards for hillsides to ensure hillside protection. Again, this has been updated to reflect the urgency ordinance related to SB9 that was adopted in late 2021. It is also expected that those policies pertaining to hillside protection will be carried forward into a regular ordinance that will be presented for the commission and council's consideration in 2022. Similar notes regarding strategy LU 12.1, about building regulations and development review, just policies, you know, implemented through the urgency ordinance currently, which will be expected to be carried through in the regular ordinance. The next strategy is about applying a slope density formula to very low and intensity residential development of the hills. We're looking at strategy LU 12.1.2. Again, just making a note that this particular policy would not apply to SB9 subdivisions because state law trumps whatever we have applied as a slope density for our hillsides. Similarly, for the semi-rural five-acre subdivision, basically says you cannot subdivide anymore in certain part of Regnart Canyon, but again, you know, subdivision authorized under SB9 would still proceed. Similarly, for the foothill modified or the modified slope, I think it's the half-acre, same thing. They can subdivide under SB9.
So, just so that for my benefit, are you saying, you know, the steep slopes and, you know, and the places, you know, where we have previously declined, you know, approvals? Because, you know, they don't, they're not safe under various reasons and all that? Are you saying, you know, SB9 could war-ride and approve projects in those areas?
Correct, but we still do have objective standards in terms of how development, that development could occur. For example, in the urgency ordinance, we have adopted regulations that say you can't build a new driveway. So if you have an existing driveway, you have to utilize that driveway in order to access any new part, any new building pad or things like that, so that we can limit the amount of development that happens up there, or that the building pad that you can come up with needs to be on the flattest, you know, least deep part of the property closest to the driveway so that we can limit how much grading occurs. And then grading quantities are also limited. So, so there are checks and balances, but yes, in general, subdivisions are allowed despite the city's best judgment on that at this point pursuant to SB9.
Got it, and at what point do we want to take a break to allow public comment? And read any comments related to that?
It would be at the chair's pleasure.
Oh, I, I understand that, but I'm trying to figure, like, what makes sense?
I think we can go through.
The LU's?
Yeah, we're pretty, well, we're about halfway through the LU's, so if, you know, we can wait until we get through the LU's or we can do it now, whatever.
Take a break here. Let's, let's stop here and see if there's any kind of public comment, and see where we are. Okay. All right, going to public comments, seeing if anyone has a hand raised or any kind of specific comments. And I know there's something we want to read as well, Sarah, so we do that. So let's, let's do the, let's take the first comment from Jenny Griffin, and then we'll read the note that was sent to us, I think, by email as well, to enter through the record. Jenny, welcome. Happy New Year. Look forward to your comments.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, Happy New Year to everybody, and Happy New Year again to parts of our wonderful city. Yes, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I appreciate the staff going through all of these items. You know, I'll tell you right now, last year was a very challenging year with the SB9 and SB10 caused me a great deal of the thinking about my state, Oregon, Washington, what's happening in Washington, DC. And I'm not very happy with the state of California right now in Sacramento. I'm happy that Cupertino took the emergency ordinance. I am very, very concerned about our hillside building. I'm glad you all were talking about the, I think it was LU 12.1.4 that Pugh had up, which was talking about the, the slope density formulas and how SB9 can override them, maybe SB10. I'm very concerned, you know, we had a 6.2 earthquake in Ferndale about two weeks ago. My mother felt it in Aptos. She was standing up, and she has sheet rock damage in her house that occurred immediately after it on a two-story ceiling. She is on sandstone. I am very, very concerned that you can have movement in these hillsides when you have a half-acre minimum on a hillside lot or you have a one-acre minimum or a five-acre minimum. There are many areas in Santa Cruz that have five-acre minimum because the areas will slide. I do not think that the people that rode SB9 and SB10 have any experience with, with land slippage during earthquakes or with heavy rains. And I'm very, very concerned about the fire damage areas. Believe me, I, my experience with some of these people that rode SB9 and SB10 is that they have zero experience with what happens in California. And the reason why there are five, 10, 20 areas of density that you cannot split is because there were people that have lived there for 50, 75 years that put those minimums in because the land will slide. I know of three instances, one of them is my aunt's house. One of her homes in Santa Cruz was destroyed in the 1989 earthquake. She had sold it, but it has been abandoned on a hillside in Santa Cruz. And I know of two other properties that the houses were twisted and torched in 1989. So I have no, I, I don't think these people in Sacramento that have rammed nine and 10 in have been in this long enough to understand what happens. But we need to protect hillsides, and I think Cupertino is doing a good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, any comments so far from the commissioners as well, as we'll go back to Pugh? We'll go to the comments to be read as well, I think, I don't, I'm in the right area. Sarah, do you know what comment that was for, like, which section?
Chair, I can help with that. I think that, that would have been comments for policy LU 26, I want to say.
We're not there yet, so we'll read it at that point in time. Okay, we'll do that. Hey, Commissioner Capil, you've got something to add?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify LU 3.2. So the, the setback and the height are still in, only the language of clarification has been changed. Is that the only change, right? So in terms of real So i- in terms of uh real uh. Uh. Uh, content of setbacks, uh distances or nothing, still the main thing. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, so the, the numbers themselves have not changed.
Thank you.
So we can keep moving here. Um. We were in the hillside section. Okay. Um, I think the, the next one was also related to hillside, you know, about following natural contours, et cetera, et cetera. The note adds the same thing, that those policies are also implemented with the city's urgency ordinance related to SB nine, and it's expected to carry through in any regular ordinance the future. Um. The next item uh was to have an update on the heart of the city's specific plan. That was not on the current work program, and so that text has been um uh eliminated. Um, because this was from the uh fiscal year twenty twenty one, uh twenty twenty one. And we are now in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, so that did not make it to that particular work program, so. Um, that text was just eliminated. Um, it makes no changes to the actual city's work program. Uh, the next amendment was in um policy thirteen six, LU thirteen six. Uh, just an update to specify that uh specific and objective design guidelines are being developed for mixed-use design. Uh, uh, for mixed-use projects. Um, there's a specific work program that it related to that, that's ongoing. Um. Uh, next uh update was in the West Stevens Creek Boulevard subarea of the heart of the city, policy LU fourteen five. It um uh talks about the Oaks um gateway, actually. Uh, which is a gateway for retail and shopping. Um, just wanted to. Uh, make sure the planning commission is aware that a development project modification, and I need to correct my spellings there. A development project modification was approved in December twenty twenty one by the council. And that the project description and plans are available online um at the city's.
Real quick, we skipped thirteen point six.
Thirteen point six. Apologies.
Is the, um, is the bold a change? Maybe I missed something.
Uh, oh, no, I went over that.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. This was the mixed-use design guidelines work program item, but.
Right, those are in, okay, cool. I'm just going through my notes.
No worries. Uh, moving forward, I think the next update is in the civic center uh subarea. Um, just a note to say that the library construction is underway currently. Um, and then for the next one related to the central Stevens Creek Boulevard subarea. Um, there is, um, there was, there were some notes about, you know, which parcels were developed. This is. Uh, related to all the projects that were uh in the south, actually. Let me see, it's in the south of Alco specific plan area. Um, and. Um, just wanted the commissioner to be aware that there is one project on one of the apple parcels, the Alco Parkway, that is currently under review and will be, um, you know. Available for the planning commission's review later this year at some point. Um. The. Uh, moving, jumping forward to the north Deansa um special area. Um, there was a, a thought at one point to make some amendments to the North Deansa conceptual plan. Um, as part of the objective standards uh work program item. However, um because the housing element work program item is moving forward. It is expected that if there are any changes, that they would be considered with the housing element update instead of a standalone project related to the North Deansa conceptual plan area. So there are changes made to all of those policies in the North Deansa uh conceptual plan area related to that. Um. And that's through. Policy LU twenty-one point six. The next edit. Is in um. Is in policy LU twenty-seven point one. Again, this is, there was a note from the planning commission at the last um. A, a general plan annual review about considering adding language about addressing possible future street state laws. Um, and I think this was to uh in, in. Consideration of SB nine or the adoption of SB nine or SB nine-related um type of uh housing bills. And so we have incorporated that already into objective standards in the Munich code, so we don't necessarily need anything in the general plan related to that at this point. See. Oh, I think we are done with the LU's, so just want to swap here. To see if anybody had any questions and to read the comment that we have that, that Syrah has.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's read the comment. Okay, um, we'll put it back up to any conversations and uh feedback from the public. Um, let's read the comment from us. Uh, from uh the email.
Just want to make sure you guys can see my screen before I start reading.
Yeah, we can see it, thank you.
Perfect, okay. So this is from Peggy Griffin, which says, Dear Planning Commissioners and Staff. In twenty twenty one, a serious mistake was made regarding the approval of a project. Batta Brothers property that from all intents in our general plan was misinterpreted to allow the complete loss of retail. On a site that was a neighborhood commercial center. This should never have happened and yet it did. If you do anything in twenty twenty-two, it should be to improve all the objective standards for land use designations. With commercial and residential so that staff doesn't interpret them to mean zero commercial. Commercial centers should remain predominantly commercial centers, so we do not lose any more retail. And do not exasperate the retail deserts and inequities in access that are growing. As housing density increases, we need places we can walk to for basic daily needs. Example of improving a standard. Page three, strategy LU dash one point three point one. Number one states, all mixed-use areas with commercial zoning will require retail as a substantial component. Make this objective by replacing with. All mixed-use areas with commercial zoning shall require retail to be a minimum of seventy-five percent of total square footage. Please make this your highest priority this year and make it quickly. With new staff, this becomes even more critical. Sincerely, Peggy Griffin.
Okay, thank you there. Commissioner Capil, I think you've got a comment there. Um, that's, but let's see if there's anything else from the public first. Let's see. Anyone want to add to that? Okay. Commissioner Capil, are you still up or your hand is back down, so?
Yeah, I mean, um, uh, the mix, what is the mixed-use guideline at this point, uh? Uh, in the mind of the staff of the planning commission. Uh, what does it entail uh in terms of uh commercial versus uh the other area? Uh, uh, in terms of percentage, right? More quantitative the I.
Um, there are no quantitative metrics for what would compro- what would be considered mixed use. Um, it could be any amount of um retail or commercial space that is provided in a project, whether that's vertically or horizontally.
I politely disagree. I would say at least a percentage should be there. It's not zero, but in a mixed-use environment, you at least have at least one percent, right? I mean, can't be zero, right?
I'm, I'm not arguing that, Chair Wong. All I'm saying is right now there is no objective standard in terms of how much, except that in the heart of the city's specific plan area. There is a um, there's a percentage that says that at least seventy-five percent of the frontage of a building that fronts Stevens Creek Boulevard. And at least fifty percent of the rear of the building um shall be occupied by uses that are sales tax generating or, or. Essentially that are sales tax generating, doesn't quite come out and say that. Um, which means that it could be a bank, it could be anything that um generates um. Uh, foot traffic uh from customers. So there is a, is a um. A pretty generic um expression that is used in the heart of the city's specific plan area. But the commission and the council is allowed to make exceptions to that on a case-by-case basis. And applicants of housing developments, which most mixed-use projects are. Are allowed under state law to apply for density bonus waivers and incentives, which could include um a waiver from that particular standard as well.
Uh, so the density will uh benefit for this mixed use is based on a certain criteria, is that right? Uh, that how much of that uh BMR housing or something of that nature is provided. So is that based on the, the total acreage of the, the lot size or is that based on? Case-by-case basis means every, every single case will come to the planning commission for review for, for?
So, uh, yes, I can go into that a little bit. Uh, in terms of density bonus, if, if the city ha- so. The city has a BMR affordability requirement to set aside, as you know. Um, the minute the city had, makes that requirement, that project becomes eligible to um become a density bonus project. Whether they include density bonus units or not. So for example, if I have a ten-unit project. And I have to set aside two units as affordable. I become eligible to get additional market rate units above the ten units that I originally would have gotten. And the minute I become eligible for that, I also become eligible for unlimited waivers. That is, if there is a development standard that the city has and my project can't meet it. I can ask for what is considered a waiver for that, and that could be any number. In addition to that, depending on how much affordable housing I'm providing. I, and at what affordability level I am providing that housing at. I am also, as a developer, eligible for certain things called incentives. Um, they could be up to, I believe, four incentives if I have at least eighty percent of my project is affordable or something like that. So, so there's certain, there's a table that's in our municipal, that's in state law essentially, it's not just in our Munich code. So as a result, um, yes, the, those things are uh pretty broad in terms of what they can ask for. And I, I think um the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this.
No, that's a good, that, that, that's a good summary. It's um. The, the um, the amount of density bonus a project is entitled to, it is tied to the number of lower, very low income. Units that the project builds, as you pointed out, uh, projects that meet are um. Are the affordable standards in our, our BMR program are going to be eligible for some kind of density bonus if they, if they um. Build those units on, onsite, and so um. Uh, a significant percentage of uh mixed use and, and multifamily projects are, if, if most, if not all, are going to be eligible for density bonus if they choose to pursue that. Thank you.
Bye.
Oh, did you call on me?
Yeah, you've got your hand raised.
Oh, I, um, something that the city attorney mentioned, you know, if, if they choose to build those units on site. Um, I believe, you know, I don't think in Cupertino we have any option to not build those on site. We don't have. Any allowance for in Lufy's or for building those um. Units in a different place unless state law is allowing that. Um, does that trump our inclusionary housing policy?
So I think, sorry, Chris, I, this, this is one thing that I wanted to say. Our BMR program actually does allow the uh developer, the option to propose as an alternative. The payment of in Lufy's. We don't encourage that necessarily. But if a developer doesn't necessarily want to build the BMR units onsite. They could uh potentially provide it in, in a different location if they so proposed, and that would be up to the planning commission, the city council to accept.
Right.
But whether that triggers density bonus or not, I think Chris can help answer that.
It, it's not like San Jose where the developer has a choice of in Lufy's or inclusionary units. Automatically, we would have to approve. An exemption to, to that, to allow them to do that, is what you're saying, I guess. Uh, or the council would.
Right, either, either way, it has to be approved. Um, there are. Um, for, for rental projects, the city is required to, to, to offer some kind of alternative to onsite. And um, the, you know, the process that Pew just described is what we would use to comply with that. But as you said, we don't, we, we, we don't, we don't encourage it and. Um, a- a- and because the, the buil- building onsite um. Does confer a lot of uh benefits on the developer under the density bonus ordinance. There is some additional incentive to use that preferred approach.
Yeah, um, y- you would think anyway, although in my speaking with. Some of the developers of our housing element projects, they would. Forgo the density bonus if they could not have to build the BMR onsite. So yes, there's a big advantage in that, but not something that they necessarily want to take advantage of. Um, okay, so, so Chris, you're saying it's, it's state law that you have to offer an alternative to onsite?
For rental projects.
For rental, okay.
It, it, it's in um the Palmer fix legislation. Um.
Ah, okay, all right, very good. All right, thank you. I'll lower my hand.
Your problem? Uh, Commissioner Mardipali?
Yeah, so uh, I, I want to go back to, you know, uh Peggy Giffins' comment and also, you know. Um, Commissioner Sanjeev's question about, you know, mixed-use projects, right? So, um, you know, I, I don't know if we have these standards, but if not, you know, maybe it's something that, you know, to establish. If, I mean, there's a reason why, you know. Various properties, you know, within the city have been so in certain way, like, you know, office use or, you know. Or retail and commercial and, you know, the residential and all that, right? So that's because, you know, we wanted city to have a balance, right? Uh, you know, um, you know, all kind of uses. But given that, you know, um, mixed use is kind of, you know, nebulous where, you know, it can be anything. Like if you don't have, you know, pro- certain standards and expectations, then people are going to gravitate towards, you know, what. The most profitable for them, like the developers, right? So we have seen that in the Balco project, you know. Unbelievable amount of an office space. Now office space is not required, you know, people are moving out or whatever, right? So I, I, I wouldn't be surprised, you know, if they convert that, you know, residential or whatever, right? So, and I saw San Jose Mercury News article today about, you know, Marina project, you know. Changing from what it was approved, like, you know, the hotel is getting dropped and, you know. The housing is going to be all, you know, for ownership housing, not, you know, rentals, because, you know, they can sell for a much higher price. I mean, I, I want housing, don't get me wrong, right? And take, for example, no Oaks project, right? So it's a seventy-five thousand or eighty thousand square. Two hundred and forty thousand of mixed use, only twenty thousand is, you know, retail, right? You, you might as well not have retail, that retail, right? It's that bad, right? So, so we've got to have a standards for mixed use, otherwise, you know. Developers are going to gravitate towards, you know, what's most attractive to them at that point. Right? And we, we, we have seen that in various examples, right? So that I just gave you. So, so, so what are we doing, you know, to establish the basic standards? For if the property is, you know, originally zoned for certain use. And if it's becoming a mixed use, you know, do we have standards where, you know, it's mostly, you know, what it was intended for while allowing for, you know, other things?
Is that a comment? Are you done?
Yeah, I, I, I'm done, but you know, it's more of like a question, right? So do we have standards? Along those lines? If not, you know, should we look at, you know, establishing standards?
Yeah, I mean, the question is whether should we have objective standards for that kind of development, a mixed use and what that means. But when we go back to the uh original comment uh from Peggy Griffin, the, the point was that um a. A standard that was set was clearly ignored and in anything with a ministerial review. If we are not clear about the objective standards, that could happen again, and I think that was the point. Right? And hopefully the objective standards that are being proposed, like when it is a mixed-use development, retail does not get, you know, um ignored. Part of the reason for that, I mean, going forward is that you won't have a tax base, right? If you keep doing that, um, and a commercial tax base, right? Or for example, if we get a lot of after-school programs, you won't have any tax base either, because those are services which are not taxable. Right? So, so that's why some of those conditions were put into place in terms of what the balance is. Uh, and then, of course, heart of the city with the frontage uh for retail, that was the original design. So, so yeah, I mean, I mean, as we go forward into twenty twenty-two, um, you know, whoever is chair. Um, and, you know, whatever programs we push through, I mean, we, we should make sure that it, it's clear there. It's not something we can do. Right, right away, but it's something that if, if council is trying to get um put through as, as their initiative to make sure that doesn't occur. I, I think that comment was more applicable to making sure, you know, we, those objective standards applied to that and also on our end to make sure that. And also on our end, to make sure that any kind of ministerial review goes through objective standards to avoid that situation. People can run roughshod on us, so. Okay. Um, I think I had one comment, but I don't know if anyone else has anything else to add. Let me see if I can pull it up here. I think it was in um twenty-seven dot one dot two um on neighborhood guidelines. Um, just like we have uh Fair Grove and other types of, you know, um zones in neighborhoods. Um, I have just a question general to to staff, like, how do we, it's not on, it's not an action item today. Um, how does it become an action item so we can preserve the character of certain neighborhoods, right? Like, like what's in uh McClellan or what's in Fair Grove? Or what's in, you know, even Rancho Renegado, which which has some funky RV parking side driveways or something like that, you know, so.
So um if if a neighborhood, a whole neighborhood comes out and says that they wish to have certain funky driveway, carport, side-loading thing that they want to retain in their neighborhood and preserve and encourage. Um, they can approach the city council and city council basically gives us direction in terms of, uh, you know. Here are the project parameters or here's what the neighborhood wants and, you know, create some sort of a zoning overlay to allow, continue to allow these things. And that's precisely what happened at the Fair Grove. That's precisely what happened at the R one A zoning district, which is the agricultural rural um the R one zoning district. That is also what happened with regard to the single-story overlay um uh zoning that was incorporated in the municipal code. However, no one has so far uh taken advantage of the single-story overlay uh uh, you know, designation. But that was, that did happen at the behest of the community wanting to wanting an option or a path forward to do that. So those are already in place, the ones that I just mentioned. And um so in the event that something happens where council gives staff direction about the special side-load carport thing. Then we would work on that, but at this point, it's not an action item because we don't have any such requests.
All right, okay, I'll leave a, I'll I'll lead a revolution to make sure RV parking side garages uh cutouts are available for streets. So, all right, cool, I know how that works. Commissioner Capel?
Yeah, we're just uh uh zoning, zeroing on the mixed use again. Uh, I I did see when we haven't covered it yet on, but uh this is on thirty-one. Uh, this uh H E two dot three dot two. So it it points out a, we were talking about B M R units on site in the mixed use development, right? So in case it's up to the developer, it looks like it may may have it or may not have it. But this H E uh two-three dot two, which is for residential housing. It uh specifies that not to pay some housing mitigation fee or some kind of a uh alternate to that. So is that applies or missed um uh uh mixed use development as well? This is purely for residential housing mitigation program.
It applies to any um anything that proposes, any development that proposes any kind of housing, any number of. So if you provide, whether you provide one unit or you provide a hundred, you have to meet the city's B M R program. Uh, if you, if you're a development between one and six units, our program allows people to pay out, as in to pay an in lieu fee. If you develop seven or more units, depending on whether it's a rental or a for-sale project, the requirements are slightly different.
Yeah, so what is the this the housing mitigation fee is in case in lieu of B M R unit onsite? So it can as well say that I I want to offer only market rate units. And in that case, uh, wha- what is this uh housing mitigation fee?
So that that you raise a very interesting question. Um, you know, in terms of the housing mitigation fee itself, like I said, if you're a project with less than seven units. So if you're a project between one and six units, the city has a a housing mitigation fee adopted. It's based on a per-square footage basis by um then we did a Nexus study several years ago, which was updated in twenty twenty. Uh, but what we looked at was, you know, different types of development, whether you're townhome development, uh attached multifamily development, a single-family development. And there were fees that were developed uh from that Nexus study, which were adopted in the city's fee schedule. So if you're a project between one and six units, you are, that's what you do. You figure out how many square feet you have developed, what your requirement would be, and you would pay the housing mitigation fee uh based on that square footage. But if you're more than seven units, you uh your basic thing that you have to do is you have to set aside units as below market rate. But if you're a rental project, there is an option for you to propose an alternative in which they would pr- propose some sort of a fee. Um, that fee would, that's a negotiable fee, I guess, in a sense, because that's not based on the fee schedule. That's a proposal that they have to make, and that's a proposal that the city uh has to consider. And I guess there might be some room to figure out what that fee should be, but I think um the city attorney might have something to add to that.
Yeah, uh, one additional question is that that how often that happens here?
It hasn't happened as far as I know. Um, that we did have a time when we were unable to implement our B M R program because there was a lawsuit that uh was uh determined that we could not uh require B M R units in uh rental developments. And so during that time, we had to accept uh in lieu fees uh for the developments. But uh aside from, but in, I think it was twenty sixteen or seventeen, that there was a fix to that. Um, there was a law, there was a change to the law, and we can now require uh B M R units. But Chris, if you have anything to add, please feel free.
Uh, no, I think that 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 covered it. Thank you.
Okay. We're all set, let's move on to the next set. Any other questions, I think, I think we're good, so. Commissioner Capel, you still good? Uh, you get your hand up, I just want to make sure. All right, we're good, all right, Pew, back to you.
Sorry, just give me a second while I pull this up. Okay, so we were at the end of the L U's when we stopped and we're moving into the housing element territory here. Sorry, I keep having to move my, okay, here we go. Um, so we have our first housing element policy is with regard to allocate the arena allocation. Um, and there are no updates in this, except that um the housing element is uh an update is anticipated to, well, it's commenced already. Uh, and we are required to complete it by, that needs to be updated, that's actually January twenty twenty-three. So um I do need to make that correction, but that needs to happen in fairly short order. Our current, the city's current arena is forty-five eighty-eight units. Um, and we do probably have to uh take into consideration some additional buffer in order to account for state law requirements related to no net loss in the event that sites do not develop at the um the affordability levels that we expect them to develop. There's changes to state law, it's a little complicated, but essentially, we have to make sure that at any given time, we have enough number of sites available at that affordability level uh to accommodate our full um requirement at that affordability level. So it's a little bit like playing um chess without really knowing what's going on, but we will have to figure that out. Um, the next thing is um A D U's. We are continuing to implement our um accessory dwelling uh unit ordinance, um which is also a product of changes to state law. Uh, we have uh permitted, I believe, uh seventy-four A D U's through twenty twenty-one, but that number is uh still being verified. And then um just an update to the notes with regard to pre-approved A D U's, this was a work program item. And um that is uh has been launched and we're looking to make sure that we have some manufactured A D U's uh available as part of this pre-approved A D U program, um so that people can um go ahead and uh skip review of that pre- prefab unit, because it's already been um uh plan-checked by our building division so that we can expedite uh issuance of those A D U permits. So that's kind of.
Again, A D U's, just so everyone has clarities too, I just, it's more for educational purposes. Um, so I can put an A D U in, then split my lot in an S B nine project to put four additional units. Can I add four more A D U's, three more A D U's to each one of the split lots? I don't know if I have any room, maybe I'll go deep and and build something like three stories underground, but but, I mean, technically, I could, right?
I do, Chris, I think, well, I'm gonna try to say this. I think you are allowed a maximum of four units after a lot split, whether you've split your lot or whether you build duplexes on your lot. And so at the end, you will end up with four units, no matter how you do this.
Including the A D U or not including the A D U, I think that was my question.
I think including the A D U.
So it's five units technically, right? I can't put an A D U on the RV split, can I, right?
Yeah, you, so you're you're limiting, you could, it, um, we're allowed to and and the ordinance we adopted does uh limit the ability to to place an A D U on a property that has been um split. Um, uh, have a ministerial lot, has a ministerial lot split under S B nine and then is developed with a ministerial permit under S B nine. So there's a a maximum of of um four units that can be developed through that process. So you can't, you can't, you can't build a duplex, two duplexes and then add an A D U to each of those duplexes.
If you put the A D U in, you're not gonna put another, you can't release, you have to get rid of it if you're gonna split the lot.
That's correct, so you could, you could, if you're not gonna split the lot, then you're still allowed to to add A D U's. If you split the lot, you you can't have an A D U on the project.
Perfect, just want to make sure everyone on the on 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 planning is clear on that, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, the next um update is in policy H E two point two, oops, uh, gosh, where did I go?
It's the Hamptons, right?
Yeah, the Hamptons, I just lost my place, sorry. The Hamptons, um, they have a ten-year D A that was approved in twenty sixteen, uh, so they still have four years left on it. The Hamptons, uh, sorry, the Marina Foods, actually, that's an error over there that I need to correct. Had a five-year D A um that has expired. Um, as Commissioner Maripatla rightly pointed out, they are hoping to come in with a modification of the project um with exactly what he described, they want to drop the hotel, um, convert what were residential units into condominiums. Uh, I think have a fewer, uh, uh, more um units on the site. Uh, and use density bonus law as well, is my understanding, but uh we're still um trying to figure all that out. We haven't received an application yet, it is anticipated.
No, there's a lot of press, but no application, so.
I have a question on that. Um, because the D A expired, it's essentially a new project, so.
Correct.
For for sale, they will now have to do um twenty percent B M R, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That makes sense.
And and they and they could, they could also ask for a GPA if they wanted to go taller and build more units, right?
They could ask for general plan amendment, correct.
I know, I don't think they're planning to, but um.
But they could also do that without asking for the general plan amendment with the density bonus project.
Right, right, okay.
Um, and then just a note to say that uh we also have with the Valco S B thirty-five project an anticipated twelve-hundred-and-one um low and very low-income units um that could be approved uh with building permits, um, if that happens.
Is there any way, just just so, just just so clarification, since we got Chris here as well, that we can uh require the developer to build those units first before anything else? So that we know that it's been built and they don't weasel their way out of these things, like when they make commitments for these kind of things? Like, if if we're truly in the interest of housing, let's make sure that those things get built and and, you know, income affordabilities are.
Yeah, so so specifically, um, uh, to give a concrete example with the Velco project. We are in the, uh, just are beginning discussions uh with the 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 uh property owner with, uh, you know, with the B M R agreements for that project and and the phasing of the B M R development is going to be one of the things. Versus the market rate development is going to be one of the things that we need to incorporate into those B M R agreements. So um so we we, you know, we try to do that through conditions of approval and then subsequent approvals of things like B M R agreements. But yes, I mean, the the idea, of course, is is to make sure that um affordable housing commitments are 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 built and followed through and and are not um, you know, not not delayed till until after the market rate, part of the projects are complete.
No, that's wonderful, that's great news.
So Chris, they could, um, you know, it would be okay if they built it, they, in any order, they just can't get an occupancy permit until.
Another way to do it as well.
Yeah, the B M R was completed.
Yeah, I, yeah, so, yeah, I I think I think that's 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 right, is that that they wouldn't, yeah, that they wouldn't be able to to um. Yeah, their goal is obviously to get an occupancy program permitted, permit and have tenants move in, so. Um, it's um effectively part of the development process.
And and digressing a little bit, what recently happened at Westport with the parcels being sold to different companies? That doesn't stop the city from its original um policy that, you know, they can't just build the um market rate and then build the uh B M R some undetermined time in the future.
That that's correct, both the benefits and the requirements of the permits that are issued uh run run with the land, so those they're binding on subsequent.
Great, thank you.
No, that's great clarification, Commissioner Saxena, so good.
Yeah, um, unfortunately, I need to drop off uh before another event I was scheduled to. I'll try to join back once it's done, I fist around by eight-thirty.
No problem, um, thank you for letting us know, uh, we still have quorum, um, so we should be getting good place, all right. All right, hmm, what are we on now? H E two point three and what else is next here? H E two point three point three, so we're.
Yes, um, so we are at uh two point three, which is basically just an update to say that this, these efforts continue to be on the current work program. Um, the next one is two-three-three, uh, there've just been updates to the amount of funding that was, um, you know, assigned to landlord counseling and dispute resolution services. So just updates to the figures and numbers in these uh following um uh policies and strategies uh with regard to our B M R A H F funds or C D B G funds, how they've been used in the current years. There will be more detail on the and the housing um update that might be, that will be provided. And the housing manager will be there, who will be able to speak more firmly on on how that money was spent or was utilized than I can. Um, but in general, um, the next one uh is strategy two-three-seven.
Uh, I I have shown on two dot three dot one.
Sure.
Uh, so as per this uh 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 that any office industrial housing mitigation program, so what about those uh which are already existing? Are they already paying for it or are they um, just trying to clarify here, like on a main street, offices are built for Apple and other companies. Uh, so are they paying for uh this mitigation fee at this moment?
It is not an ongoing fee, Commissioner Capel, it's a one-time fee that is paid with development. And so when the project was built, they did pay the fee that was in effect at the time.
I see, so this this uh two dot three dot one is in effect since when?
This was adopted as part of the last housing element cycle, these policies were put into place in twenty fourteen. However, these might have been holdovers or carryovers from the housing element before that. We've had our office industrial housing mitigation program since, I want to say, two thousand and four, when I first joined. I think that was the first year that I saw, or maybe the fees. I think we've had this program since the mid-nineties and the fees were updated in two thousand and four, if I recall correctly.
I see, okay, so this is a basically B M R fee, uh, uh, is that right? Because there, uh, at this point, at the uh, the lot of developments have happened since two thousand and four onwards. So and not all of them.
Project, every project that has happened since the fee was put into place has paid the fee. And it's a one-time fee, it is not an ongoing fee.
Thank you.
All right, let's carry on.
There was a two-three-seven at the top of page thirty-four, just some amendments, oh, am I, no. Um, just some amendments related to um the project modification for the Oaks, um, which use the density bonus program. Um, let's see, uh, again, some updates related to how um C D B G money was uh spent um on together silicon. um, on together Silicon Valley and the Vista Village renovation. Um, just updates related to that, um, let's see. Another update related to how money was spent in uh, strategy HE five, one, two. Um, moving on to HE six, one, one, uh, same thing, um, how funds were spent uh, to support our uh, the housing needs or persons with needs. Uh, moving on to the mobility section, let's see. There are really no uh, updates, I don't believe, in this section, except for that the, in policy M four, two, which is about the local transportation services. Uh, the via trans, the shuttle service was um, stopped in, uh, was suspended uh, in twenty twenty, uh, into twenty twenty one, and I think the service resumed in late twenty one.
Do you like that? I do have a question, sorry, on M one, two. Um, I think if you look at the general plan, policy, strategy text, is that level of service E plus for Stevens Creek and Stelling, not LOD? Just wanted to make sure. Sorry, it's just in my notes.
Oh, yes, LOS.
It should be level of service was an E plus.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanna make sure we catch that.
Yeah, um, I I have to check to see whether that's a typo in the original general plan or not, because this text was copied.
Oh, God, we took it from the general plan that way?
So I I have to just verify.
Okay, good point, all right.
Yeah, just, oh my, I was also looking at this one, that uh, policy M dash one dot two. Uh, what is the E plus means actually to?
It's pretty bad, but um, but that this LOS E plus, well, LOS actually measures the amount of delay that happens as you sit in traffic or at traffic signals. And so, but that is an old way of measuring how uh, how traffic flows essentially. And so while this is here, I know that there are, as you know, um, you know, CEQA has required us to move from LOS as a CEQA threshold to VMT, which is vehicle miles traveled, which is a different way of measuring how uh, projects or there's impacts on uh, the environment from a project. And so we have adopted policies related to VMT. My understanding is that um, there is gonna be a VMT, uh, what do they call it, a VMT inventory that needs to happen before the city can adopt LOS thresholds. Um, so I I know that something is going on in the transportation division surrounding that. I just don't have the details of it, but I know that there is um, something afoot with regard to a VMT inventory before they can actually revisit LOS, um, and and.
We're still keeping LOS, right? Because that's what people feel, the pain they feel, wow, when when there's traffic. It's not that, but things are being asked to be calculated in VMT, if that's correct.
There there is a typo looks like here LOD, it says, uh, is that a right one or LOS?
That's what we were mentioning. We were not sure if it came over from the um, from the.
So uh, one other question I had was that very specific intersections are mentioned here, uh, like Stevens Creek, Bolivarby and Stevens Creek, Stelling and Stevens Creek, Wallingdale. Uh, I would think the Stevens Creek and Wolf is also a major one, right? So uh, is there a reason these these are uh?
Yes, there is a reason why these are called out. So as you can see, the first bullet point there actually says major intersections should have an LOS of D, which is actually higher than an LOS of E plus. The three that are called out separately are what are considered CMP intersections or congestion management plan intersections. So we don't necessarily control those, or while we control those, I think that LOS standard is set by the VTA, who is our congestion management agency. And so uh, we have to, we have to comply with whatever their standards are and their standards for these three particular intersections are, is E plus, which is a lower standard than our, you know, particularly for Stevens Creek and Wolf, as you pointed out, our standard is D. However, again, all of this needs to be revisited and reworked, because I understand that even uh, the VTA has updated their thresholds, because they're no longer looking at LOS, they're looking at VMT too. So I think they've also revisited and I think that they're making changes to these three intersections as well. So we have to do something about this policy, and I know the transportation division is working on it. I just don't have the details of what's going on.
Okay.
All right.
Hold on.
Um, moving forward, um, we just discussed the via shuttle, um, uh, being um, having resumed in twenty twenty one. Um, let's see. Uh, yes, uh, the next one is related to.
M eight, six, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at this. You know, I I think this one needs to be updated and has not been as yet. I think this text is uh, from the prior years, uh, the bolded text here on this page on um, policy M dash seven dot one and seven dot two. Uh, I know this project is currently on hold. Oh, no, 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 no. So this is the um, the actual VMT, we just talked about this, the VMT thresholds that um, you know, I was talking about how the state has changed, how we have to evaluate uh, impacts, transportation impacts uh, in the CEQA world. And so we've already adopted those thresholds, and so this updated text reflects that, that we did that in early twenty twenty one. The next um, one is related to greenhouse gas emission at policy M dash eight dot six. Um, we are, uh, the city has approved a CIP project to expand the public-owned EV charging network. And so uh, additional grant funds are being sought from the air district. And there's a, uh, I understand a public outreach process being planned for calendar year twenty twenty two. Um, and this is gonna be um, done by the sustainability division, so they're gonna bring that forward. Uh, moving on, the next update is in policy M ten, two, about the transportation impact fee.
Uh, just sure one thing about uh, M A dot six. Um, uh, it seems like the uh, that there is a um, uh, there's special funding coming from FCC and uh, uh, California Electric Recore Infrastructure Project. So is there a, is there a reason, uh, I mean, uh, I did see somewhere here some hydrogen or something, uh, fueling has been provided here. I mean, uh, is that some based on their guidelines or is that the city decided for this?
No, so the hydrogen um, fueling dispenser is different from the EV charging stations. The hy- hydrogen fueling dispenser, it was approved at a gas station at the corner of Bob and Stevens Creek. That was a private project, but I think they received grant funding from the state, because the state wanted to expand the hydrogen fueling stations across the um, the state. And so that was a, it was a private project, but kind of supported with state grants, but had nothing to do with the city other than the city had the approval, land use authority on approving that, those hydrogen fueling dispensers. Um, the EV charging network is really, I think it would be in the public right away, possibly, I think. Um, so it it it's really, or on city property or, you know, I don't know where they're gonna go. And that's probably part of the outreach process that will occur in twenty twenty two.
Coming to a sidewalk near you. I'm just kidding.
You can lobby for it. Um, the next one is policy M ten, two, um, and this is about the TIF. Uh, we do have a current TIF, uh, there was a uh, process to update that TIF. However, I think that has been suspended and um, uh, so we updated uh, this particular um, language in this um, uh, section regarding that. I'm not sure exactly uh, when that might occur again, but I don't think it's gonna occur anytime soon. Um, moving on, we have, actually, we're at the end of the mobility section, so Chair, do you think we should continue?
Public comment, uh, real quick, so if there's any public comment, let's bring folks in before we get into GHGs. Okay, um, see if there's any public comment. We've got four people, you know, uh, adamantly watching, I hope you're paying attention. If you've got questions and comments, please definitely jump on in, uh, raise your hand, we'll give you three minutes if you wanna add your two cents. All right, going once, going twice. All right, we'll move on. So Commissioners, um, I will suggest that we take a break at eight thirty, um, so we have a little bit of break in between. Uh, but let's see how much more we can pile on through here. Um, we're halfway through, just that people are keeping track, so.
Okay, moving on to sustainability. Um, so we have um, updates here, uh. There's just updates to say, you know, we've adopted all electric reach codes. Uh, we also, in twenty twenty one, the council authorized waving fees for certain landscaping projects that conserve water. Um, this uh, that include part, uh, planning fees, I'm I'm not sure whether it includes building permit fees, but it might. Uh, particularly if you're a project that uh, conserves water, if it's a landscape replacement project. Um, in twenty twenty one, I think the council gave direction to draft a climate action plan, uh, which would bring the city to carbon neutral by twenty forty or earlier. Um, so that's gonna happen this year, and I think there's some text in here about what the council has authorized or what steps have been taken that have been taken so far, sorry.
So just, and and just, this is for Chris as well, asking for a friend. Um, if we were trying to bring back our natural gas range, um, we've eliminated those by twenty twenty three, if I remember, um, in terms of hookups or gas hookups, if somebody wanted to bring that back, how would they do that? Um, is that, is that, would they have to change this part of the um, of kind of our, our plan, our annual report, our plans here? Or is it something they can change in the general plan, or is that a city council decision? So, a number of residents that are. So, that that happened.
I'm sorry, what's the, what, what's, what's the specific?
Reach codes, we've banned gas ranges and, you know, I've got a constituent of, they're saying, what the, da, 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 as they're remodeling their homes. They're like, oh, my God, I gotta get this done before twenty twenty three, so.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that 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 is a city council decision, um, you know, the reach codes are 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 locally adopted building codes, so that that's um, you know, that will be adopted by co- by council. On a state statewide, um, you know, the building, building standards are going through another revision cycle. And so I I think, you know, you'll expect the statewide standards to start catching up with some of the requirements of reach codes as the state goes through its its next um, next uh, building, building code revision cycle. Uh, so and if 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 at that point it's adopted as a state building standard, of course, then, you know, we don't have any control over it. We have to, we have to comply with it.
No, understood, understood. I just, people could still change it unless the state codes, the CBC is actually coming into place, so.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, just wanna, I'm asking for a friend, there's enough people who have pulled me aside and said, hey, what is this rule? And I'm like, oh, yeah, here we go, so, um, if they really wanted to change it, that's how they would do that. Okay, cool. All right, let's get to the next GHD.
Yes, the next uh, few are also related, related to the cap update process, um, you know. I should mention at this point, I think there is some outreach going on related to the cap at the city's Engage Cupertino website, so please feel free to go in and provide your input, including the one that you mentioned, Chair Wong. Um, there is uh, uh, you know, related to the, there's some policies related to climate hazards assessment. And so um, our cap will support the countywide climate hazards assessment. Um, uh, let's see, and the next one is ES two, one, one, about an energy sustainability. And there is um, some language in here about updating the environmental purchasing policy um, and also to evaluate codes at the next statewide code cycle, um, beginning in uh, twenty twenty two, as I understand it. Um, there's also uh, sustainable infrastructure was approved in the city's CIP investments and uh, therefore there will be a comprehensive set of energy efficiency and decarbonization measures that will be studied and proposed as part of the CIP. Um, again, uh, some language about the uh, EPP, the environmental purchasing policy um, being addressed in this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, the next.
So uh, uh, so is there a uh, some measures identified for decarbonization uh, for the city? Is that something yet in a study book, kind of a thing?
Sorry, um, Commissioner Capell, I did not understand the question.
So you have this uh, uh, deco- uh, decarbonization measures, right? Uh, as part of this uh, the previous uh, uh, measure. And so I was just wondering, those measures are in place or they have yet to be identified? It is, it is mentioned as part of uh, I guess, uh, actually ES two dot one dot two.
Correct, so there are, um, you know, as part of the city's cap, there will be policies uh, adopted. I know that there was, their draft policies that were presented to council or something like that. And they're actually developing some of those uh, policies right now, because the cap is being developed right now. And all of those will kind of trickle down and feed and, you know, inform these decisions um, in terms of how can we achieve, best achieve our uh, you know, goals. So it, yes, some of it is being developed. We already have a cap, so any, any, um, you know, decisions that are made have to be in uh, compliance with the city's existing cap. So we have, I I think the Sustainability Division will be looking at all of those very carefully before proposing, uh, making any proposals as part of the CIP.
Their timeline for this is this, this uh, twenty one, twenty two, or because here it says that was not initiated in two thousand and twenty.
That was the EPPP, that's a different thing, not the CIP. So the EPPP is the environmental purchasing uh, policy. And so that, that is what is gonna happen this year, but the CIP was already approved uh, in the last fiscal year. So that's gonna move forward on a separate track.
Hmm, okay. Uh, do you have some um, examples of that, or I mean, just, just curious, what kind of measures?
No, but I would, I would highly encourage you to contact the Sustainability Division, because they, they're very excited about all this kind of stuff and will be able to give you a lot more information and have a lot more knowledge than I do on this stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Can only imagine, so, all right.
So the next one is related to incentive programs about ener- energy sustainability, two, one, four, in the ES section. Um, there, uh, they talk about two major updates to incentive programs, um, particularly related to EVAC power. Um, so I believe that there is, um, they were able to reduce emissions from power supplies um, with plans to reduce consumption of gas as soon as possible. And secondly, that the state of California has created a new incentive program for replacing gas equipment with electric equipment. And I believe it's called the tech program. So um, you, I think you can find out more at Bayren and PG&E. I think those are the two uh, agencies that are providing these incentives, oops.
They are. If you've got a large Asian restaurant, you're you're kind of annoyed, as I was pointing out here. I want my gas-fired walk, if you're going.
Um, energy sustainability about urban forests, uh, one of the uh, draft measures in the uh, climate action plan is to create an urban tree canopy plant, uh, which will inform strategies to sequester carbon in the urban forest and soils. So we'll see how that kind of pans out to see if that might have any impact on our protected tree ordinance. So there's gonna be a lot of uh, movement in the whole cap world. Um, again, a note about uh, alternative modes of transport, the via shuttle has been initiated in twenty twenty one, again, after being suspended for COVID. Uh, moving on to our air quality section, ES four, one, one, about toxic air contaminants. Did add a note in here about the adoption of our environmental protection standards. Um, uh, also for uh, uh, dust control, so those two, uh, if if the commission recalls. In addition to our general plan amendment, we also adopted an ordinance about env- environmental protection standards. Um, so that will all um, help us meet these goals.
A queue, that ordinance does not cover any monitoring, if I'm, if I'm, if I remember.
It does not. That is more for development projects, not an ongoing operation.
We don't have monitoring requirements for facilities that, you know, have, you know, open-end construction or something like that at the moment, so.
Correct, we do not.
I just wanna be clear, so everybody knows, we, there is no monitoring, right? We have an ordinance, but we have no idea if we can enforce that ordinance, so, okay.
Oh, we can enforce the ordinance on complaints, yes.
Through complaints, but we're not doing active monitoring of of sites. If someone is like digging and toxic soils are discovered and something.
Actually, um, so the um, the issue with the toxic soils uh, was a kind of addressed in the ordinance, because somebody of a, any person that does that kind of digging or development on property does have to prepare um, phase one ESA reports and phase two ESA reports, uh, which involve a lot more um, detailed review of the uh, of the soils. Um, and then de- depending on what is found in those reports, they would be referred to an agency for review and uh, oversight by that agency.
Understood. Hypothetically, I don't wanna rehash history, but hypothetically, you know, depending which corp wars you actually take, you might not see anything. And so that's, that's, that's why I was just asking about the monitoring, there's no constant monitoring on construction sites at the moment. Vice Chair Scharf, you have a hands up, so go ahead.
I do, so is there anything regarding indoor air quality for new development in terms of um, airflow? I know that a lot of um, buildings, multi uh, residential buildings have had issues where during. Buildings, multi uh residential buildings have had issues where during Covid, where the air exchange is not sufficient. Or where adjacent units kind of share the air and are not, it's not vented to the outside. Are we doing anything in terms of um air quality in new developments? I see E S four point two for existing developments, but do we?
So, yeah, so with regard to new developments, uh we do have um some requirements in that environmental protection standards chapter. About um cert- developments in certain areas that are identified by BAC Med as. I think there's certain names for them, but there's certain categories of uh areas where um I think it says implement best practices or something. There's one area that's called implement best practices, and I think that is kind of pretty much, uh you know, along the freeways. Um so you have to do higher filtration, I think these number of thirteen filters or things like that that you have to put in. But in terms of Covid-related, uh you know, um mitig- I don't wanna use the word mitigations, but Covid-related. Um issues that need to be hashed out, we look to the building code for that. Um this is more about the effects of the environment on the project rather than um, you know, air indoor shared air circulation things. For that, we look to the building code.
Okay, well, I hope we can also work on the building code before some of these new developments come to uh. Fruition because, you know, once they're built, you can't go back and fix the uh air exchange quality. It has to be done, you know, you know, when it's built. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um Vice Chair Sharf, there's uh there are codes um for like uh the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers, ASHRAE. And C D C actually have best practice guidelines for Covid nineteen and indoor air quality. So it might be something in 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 future, if you're actually researching that, it's something I've I've looked into, so.
Right, I mean, just, just so it's a requirement, not something that uh, you know. Whatever trade agency eight for HVAC um thinks is a good idea. Because you know that, you know, a lot of um property owners will build as cheap as possible.
So, understood, cool.
All right, moving on to E S four two one, again, a reference to the Via Shuttle and uh. Uh let's see.
This, this is just a crazy question of mine, how do you get on this Via Shuttle, I I like, if I wanna hop on this puppy?
My understanding is there's an app, I think there's a Via app that you can uh download and and ride on it.
Yep, it it's like a whole like app, so just book it and uh. I tried to use it once, but then it didn't work out, so I kind of did something else, so.
Okay, no problem, my goal is to ride every V T A bus line this year, uh probably by myself, but uh hey, what the heck, I get my tax dollars worth. All right, keep going.
Um next would be E S four two five, uh this is with regard to local air quality monitoring. Uh that was just discussed, my understanding is that Sustainability Division is partnering with I T. Um for some sort of a monitoring, um and that they're also developing a series of educational resources.
Oh, that's cool, okay, cool, we'll get some monitoring, at least the Lehigh Plant.
Uh let's see, the next one is in E S five three two about minimizing lawn areas in the hillsides. Um again, this is implemented through the municipal code. And we're also carrying this forward with the newly adopted urgency ordinance related to S P nine. And would also be carried forward in any future regular ordinance related to that. See, the next one is E S seven nine one about water conservation. Um there was a water shortage declared, emergency condition in Santa Clara County in June last year. Um the Board of Directors called for fifteen percent mandatory reduction uh compared to twenty nineteen. And Cupertino uh between July and September, um successfully reduced uh water consumption at the municipal facilities. By sixteen percent compared to twenty nineteen, uh which resulted in a conservation of eight million gallons of water. So kudos to our Public Works and other teams for doing that. Um with uh regard to policy, E S seven ten one, um there was a uh in terms of outreach. There was a new banner that was hung over Stevens Creek Boulevard to make residents aware of the drought. And um you know, making sure that there was adequate messaging surrounding that to um uh encourage conservation.
So so great job on the water conservation, so kudos to the community and the residents, are we going to get penalized for it? Because their profits went down?
Uh oh, I have no idea, you'll have to talk to the Board of Directors.
You're impacting pensions again, darn it, all right, keep going.
Oh, um Pugh, I saw in one thing it mentioned the Cupertino Courier, I don't think that's being published anymore, is it?
Oh, the Cupertino Courier is still being published.
Oh, okay, I have not gotten one in many months, so.
My legal ads are going for these public hearings, so.
Oh, okay, well, someone, I guess someone's seeing them, but uh.
Definitely there, I've gotta pile them in my, somewhere on my lawn, so.
All right, yeah, they don't deliver in our area anymore, I guess, okay.
You can have mine anytime you want, so, I don't know where to recycle them, other than recycle, so, keep going.
Yeah, I I don't get them, so I I don't know why.
I'm happy to share.
Um the next um strategy is E S seven eleven six, uh again regarding the dashboard. Um we uh produced a se- series of internal water use dashboards. Uh you know, there were regular meetings that happened with staff, including facilities, ground staff, all kinds of divisions met together. Um and they looked at these things and um looked at trends for how water was being used. And that's what actually helped with reducing water usage at the municipal facilities uh by that eight million gallons uh that I mentioned earlier.
Wha- what's the definition of internal?
I'm sorry, did you ask, what was the question?
What is the definition of internal?
Uh city.
No, no, in that uh water saving of eight gallons or whatever it says internal. Uh so internal water use dashboards, so.
Yeah, so municipal water use, so how was water used at the city facilities, at, you know, the, the. The golf course, the, you know, any of the city's uh facilities.
Vice Chair Sharf, you got a question? I think you're on mute, if you're asking, Vice Chair Sharf.
I forgot to lower my hand, that's.
Okay, no problem, all right, cool. And you mean internal use, like going back to Commissioner Capil's point, that's, that's any city use of water.
Municipal use, correct, any city use.
Yeah, okay, and we probably had a reduction because nobody went into work, right? There's, there's a little bit of that too, even though that's probably not the majority of consumption, right?
A lot of it, I think, came from the um, the stuff that happens at the the golf course, that's our biggest water use, I think. Let's see.
It's funny, we plant more trees, we use more water, hmm, how does that work? Keep going, next.
See, I'm kind of moving through these.
Well, this is a lot easier than last year, I think we had a lot more changes last year, so. Not much on fire safe, are you, yeah, where you passed?
Uh I'm in infrastructure right now, and this is infrastructure six three one. I think.
And that is page number, just for people.
Page number eighty.
Right, you're like eighty.
Page eighty, I think, I think they're still in the process of developing the strategic plan, but I gotta find out more information. But that text has been started, I guess it has been adopted, there's a strategic technology plan which is available online. So it's possible. I think this is, this was old language, um it was adopted in twenty twenty, so we're looking at twenty twenty one. So that's just the reason why that was deleted, it's just that it's available now, it was adopted in twenty twenty, but it's now available. Um, next is infrastructure eight one about reducing waste. Um, there are diversion requirements that are required, and these are captured in our franchise hauling agreements. Between um, I guess, recology or any other uh provider that we have and the municipal code. Um so.
What are the organic waste stuff coming to in a few years as well?
Correct, I I know we're having to do that in the city that I live, so it's, it's coming soon.
Yeah, yeah, there's a methane uh reduction requirement of getting organic waste put somewhere else instead of landfills doing methane capture, so, okay.
Yeah, this is, so council adopted an ordinance to implement the organic waste provisions, and we're in the process of entering into contracts. For um for use of the um compost in particular, so that, 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 that is being implemented.
Yeah. And recapture co-gen plants, but, oh well, we'll do it the hard way.
The next one is an R P C, which is Recreation and Parks.
Those falling around, so.
Two five two, um it basically is about the uh Rancho Rinconada Recreation and Park District, I think. That is the R R R P D, um so in March of last year, the council reviewed uh that work program item that was on uh there. And they unanimously di- delayed consideration of the annexation of the district. Until the district itself completed its visioning process and outreach process. And um their Board of Directors made a formal recommendation on whether the city should ac- acquire or or and or annex them. And it will also allow the city to um conduct additional engagement uh for, oh gosh, what was that? Oh, for any aquatics facilities, for long-term planning for any aquatics facilities in the city.
Yeah, you're talking about the pool in Rancho Rinconada, correct?
Right, yes. And so that, that was the council's decision in um May of um, March of twenty twenty one.
Okay, yep.
About the um community gardens, which is the next one down from that, uh uh on page eighty five. Uh there's a design that is currently underway for a community garden at Wilson Park, is my understanding. Um, I think we're.
It's just the library is the last one.
Yes, the library is the last one, that's on page eighty seven, R P C six four. There's a minor change where last year they were designing the library, this year they're actually in the process of constructing it. So that's the only other update, that, the report is concluded.
Well, I guess nobody was doing anything last year, didn't look busy at all, so, just kidding, being sarcastic, lots of programs, uh lots of stuff going on there, so. Um, good to know. Uh any other questions from the commission before turning it over to the public for any input or comments from, from their end?
Uh just a question, uh I, I forgot which uh item was that, that. The intent of that item was to share the resources, then not in use in schools for public. Uh, what, can you handle it? It's, it's one, it's one of those.
Yes, I can explain that, so we do have a bunch of joint use agreements with the school districts for the use of their um fields. And so that is the purpose of that particular um policy.
It's two point, one point two, for those falling on page eighty three, so, yeah.
Yeah, is that just for the fields or the other uh like pools and other things?
Uh no, it's only for the, for the fields, because the schools, I mean, they have their own um capital improvements and other things. And of course, if the city and the school were to enter into a joint use agreement for use of any of that for public purposes. At this point, the only things that I'm aware of that we have a joint use agreement for is for the fields. After school, yeah.
Okay, any other comments, questions in the uh G P A uh review? Annual report, sorry, G P A report. Okay, let's turn it over to the public, see if there's any questions, we have four people that have managed to pile through, power on through this as well. Got any questions, happy to have you, questions, comments?
Uh just one, uh okay, I I I send back later to the public comment.
We'll bring you back in, we'll bring you back in, there's apparently no comments, um hopefully no one's asleep, if you are, that's okay, we totally understand. But yes, Commissioner Capil, back to you, uh what do we have?
Yeah, so we had a meet last year about the five G antennas. Uh uh that was not looking very um uh eye-friendly. Uh and a lot of complaints were there from the residents there also, i- is there any uh item in this? Plan addresses to that, I did see that something, but I didn't tell the staff has been done in that later to it.
Yeah, and Pugh, this is just a review of what was done last year, not what's about to happen this year, just to be clear.
This was, this is only a report on what has happened so far.
Chris, sorry, sorry, uh Chris, five G is on the city council work plan for next year, is that correct? Or for this current year that that we're.
For, for, for the current year, that's correct, yeah.
And aesthetics, for those that are paying attention, not, not about health reasons, but aesthetics and standards, I believe is what we're talking about.
Yep, yeah, and 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 um, yeah, and and so, I mean, we, with the new city manager. We do need to to have that discussion with him about timing for moving that forward, but um I I believe we'll be prepared to move it forward.
Got it, okay, got some standards there, all right, cool. All right, so I guess, I mean, are there any other comments or changes that we are going to make? And then, Chris, how do we actually make the motion for this? Um do we just, we don't have to do anything, we're just providing act direction, there's nothing we have to approve, right, is that correct, there's no votes to be taken here?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that that the commission is 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 uh requested to ta- take any action. I I think um, you know, staff has, has taken the input and will incorporate it. Uh and I I, you know, I'll just for a few is to, you know, the process for bringing this back um to the planning commission, if any.
Okay, tremendous, all right, um any other comments, Pugh, from your team, uh anybody else, anything you wanna add?
Not about this project, no, thank you.
Okay, all right, with that, um we kind of can move on to item number three, and then probably adjourn early if if we do this properly. Um, all right, move to item number three, subject twenty twenty two, mayor's meetings with commissioners. Uh recommended action appoint representatives for the monthly mayor's meetings with commissioners. I would suggest a process where we throw out a date and someone says yes, and they put it on their calendar, I think that's what we're trying to do, if that's correct. Uh that'll make it easier, um and Sarah, are you leading, leading that process, so?
Yes, I can, and let me um share my screen.
Okay, cool, we'll put you to put the calendars in, we will just do that, we'll just alternate if anybody has a certain date that they wanna go to, if they're on a vacation, we can kind of do that. And just for those listening, it's the mayor's uh monthly meeting where he gets together with, um like in this case, he gets together with his uh commissioners. Uh and all the different commissions get together and we send a representative to give updates on what's been going on in the past uh four weeks. Um so any projects, any plans, things that we pass, a good opportunity to share information with other commissioners, uh and and let them know what's going on. Uh and it's a good chance to kind of uh let the mayor know what's happening as well, so, all right, we got the dates. So yeah, we'll just go down the line, who wants to sign up for tomorrow? Anybody up for tomorrow?
I I cannot do tomorrow, but I'm happy to sign up for any of the other months.
I can't do tomorrow, but I think I've been signed up for tomorrow, so that's why I'm suggesting that, so.
Um, let's see, five to six.
Commissioner Saxina, you're not here, you're doing tomorrow, I was kidding, we're not gonna do that, Tom. Mooney, um uh.
Yeah, I can do tomorrow.
Okay, all right, take tomorrow, perfect, so.
So I, I need the meeting invite and details, so.
Which I believe Pugh hasn't can forward.
I can, I can forward that to you, Commissioner.
I just wanna put it on my calendar.
I can easily take February ninth if somebody wants, doesn't want that date, so happy to do that. Um, let's see what March ninth looks like, anyway.
I'll take March and August, the same time, okay?
Ooh, look at that, two for one, all right.
Because that's five months.
Yep.
Hi, okay, I'll take April and October.
Sanji, you said the April and October.
Yeah, I I'll take May.
Oh, he's back, darn, I thought we were gonna assign these to you.
Uh, I knew I had to be back with, when you're assigning the things, right?
Sarah, uh April, Sanji said you will take.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I think I missed that one, did I catch?
Chair Wang, I do wanna point out, if we ever go back to in-person meetings, that these meetings do include refreshments.
Ooh, I'm in, my tune eighth, count me in, I'll take June eighth, since that's the uh next logical one, so.
Okay, so that, that means I'm not doing tomorrow, I'll be afraid later on.
You're delaying for snacks, we'll send you a snack hit. That's awesome.
Okay, so uh I can do June.
All right, that means I'll take July then, and then they'll even it out.
Yeah, I'll take October.
June eighth, right, June eighth.
Um, so I can take September.
All right, we got two extra months, if anybody wants to jump in again, I'm happy to do November ninth if nobody wants it. Um and then December fourteenth, uh, does that meeting ever happen? Yeah, I guess it does.
I'd rather do November and not December.
Fine, I'll do December, you can have November.
Hopefully.
You can have November.
We do have one more for January eleventh.
We do have one more for January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, which would fall before the next um planning commission meeting. Actually, that would be the day.
I give you kudos for scheduling that one ahead of time.
Yeah, I would take that. I would take that.
Okay, thank you.
Massive kudos for advanced planning for that one.
And we will be discussing these at the next meeting, so I'll go ahead and save this document and make sure to get this sent out to the commissioners um once everything's decided at the next meeting.
Well, thank you for keeping us organized and uh planned in ahead, so this is great, super efficient, great job, team.
Thank you.
Oh, i- is it five to six?
That is correct. It's still five to six unless it changes um by the month.
So I just blocked my calendar uh for those two dates, June eighth, and so I'll just look for meeting invites, okay? Thank you.
You're welcome. And I did, Commissioner Madipatla, forward you the information for um tomorrow's meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, sounds great. Okay, with that, let's jump to staff and commission reports. Anybody have anything to add? And Pew, if you can explain what we're doing next week's, two weeks from now, the meeting in terms of election, I think that'll be useful for everyone to know as well.
Sure, um so I actually did have an announcement to make uh for the public at large um due to the staffing challenges, due to the spread of the Omicron variant. Um the public counter has been closed for in-person appointments. Uh staff continues to be available for virtual appointments. Uh we do have the bookings calendar available online, so please feel free to make your appointments there. Uh you will get a Teams link uh which will be used, and you do not have to have the Teams application on your computer in order to use that link. So feel free to call or to schedule an appointment virtually. Um and that applies to all divisions, uh planning, building, and public works, including finance, I believe.
Pew, is it true that a phone call in actually just gets redirected someone's uh place uh actual place of work, not necessarily the uh the uh office and the buildings in the city? Is that true?
Um we actually have soft phones, so it so they'll ring on our laptops.
They run your laptops, exactly. Okay, cool.
Um and then uh in terms of the elections uh next week, uh I guess there are elections, a selection. Um there is the selection of the chair and vice chair on the agenda next week. There's also the selection of the chair and vice chair for the DRC.
Not next week, in two weeks.
Sorry, next, yes, next meeting, uh which will be on, let's make this very clear, on January twenty-fifth. Um and so there will be also the selection of the chair and vice chair and alternates for the DRC um representatives to the Environmental Review Committee, and um, let me see. I think those are the only two. Sarah, am I missing anything? DRC and ERC, correct?
That's correct, um and there's also economic development, which as of this meeting is still to be determined, but in the event that the meetings are restructured, we will at least have a representative for me.
Correct, so just uh selecting uh representatives in the event that there are, uh there is an Economic Development Committee meeting. Um so all of that will happen at the next meeting.
Encourage you guys to uh nominate yourselves, so definitely feel that out there. Okay, um anything else from the uh commissioners? Okay, and anything you guys want on future agenda items um that we may have missed uh for future agenda setting? And just a funky question, I'm on the agenda planning meeting because that's the then the last meeting for the chair at that point in time, is that correct? Okay, so if there's any other agenda items that we want to put on there, okay, so. All right, well, with that, uh since there's nothing else here, um I will uh then adjourn the City of Cupertino's planning commission meeting for January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, uh and uh thanks, everybody, for joining, so.
Well, nice.
Thank you.